First, we'll have public comment. All written public comments that are received prior to four, the day before the library board meeting will be compiled and added as supplemental material for the library trustees and the public to review prior to the meeting. To make public comment during the meeting, the public must call 775-783-6024 and leave a voice message which will be played for the library board of trustees and the public. Any written public comment received after 4:00 p.m. the day before the library board meeting will be compiled and added as supplemental materials to the county's website and distributed to the library board of trustees within 24 hours after the meeting. So, public comment?
This is Veronica Hallam for the record. I have not received any voicemail public comment as of yet. I did receive written public comment this morning, and I will make sure it is available to the public and the trustees within 24 hours after this meeting.
So Cynthia, do we have to wait five minutes?
Yes, you do. So, I believe that was played at 10:02, so at 10:07 you can move forward with the meeting. Cynthia Gregory from the District Attorney's Office. I just want to thank everybody for coming to the meeting, and Amy and Veronica in redoing this meeting. Obviously, in reviewing the agenda, I missed that it wasn't available to the public last time, so I apologize for any inconvenience or confusion, and really appreciate everybody coming here today to redo the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you Cynthia.
It is not coming through my email, so I will play it on the speaker on my phone. This is Veronica Hallam.
You have no unheard messages.
And one heard message, custom.
My name is Reed Maritka Ohens. I'm a resident in Sacre d'Or, Tennessee. I was a board member of the Library Foundation for Shuttered Design. I am going in as the library trustee to not sever the contract you have with the investigation of the library director. There's no need to go into that any further and press into Doyle Center. I explained it all very well. I would like you to have to use your full authority as a trustee to investigate the situation of the sheriff, but just ask other sources. Do not use library forces to investigate the director. Nothing needs to be done there. I fully support our library. It has wonderful citizens and love of the community. Please do not use resources of the library to investigate the director. Use your authority as a trustee to ask for an investigation of their threat to the library. Thank you very much.
To replay, press 1. To save, press 2.
Did you need me to replay?
Press 3. To forward, press 4. To reply, press 5. To replay envelopes, press 6.
Okay.
You're muted, Amy.
Sorry about that. I couldn't hear it very well, but Veronica, I'm sure you can hear it well enough that you could transcribe it if necessary.
Yes, yes.
If you need to replay it Cynthia?
Heard it just fine. I don't know if it's the wool of the chair. You can certainly replay it again, but I could hear it. I don't know if the other trustees could hear it or not.
I could not hear it.
Could not hear it clearly. I don't know that replaying is going to help.
Yeah.
Maybe having it transcribed would be a bit more beneficial for us.
And Veronica, did you perhaps get it to come through on your computer this time?
It did not come through on my computer, and I tested the voicemail this morning, and it did work. It did come through on my computer, but this message did not, and I don't know why that is.
Okay. Amy Poole?
Sorry.
Is she on the line? Do you have any... Do you have any suggestions?
As far as getting it to play a little bit clearer, unfortunately, no, unless it comes through on her email. She did the best that she could to get it to play through the speakerphone.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I suggest that Veronica transcribe it and include it with the supplemental materials, if that's acceptable to everyone.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay. Yeah, thank you Veronica.
Okay, thank you.
Was there any other messages?
No, that was the only voicemail received.
Okay, and it is now 10:10, so we'll close public comment. Moving on to agenda item number two for possible corrective action. Discussion on the approval of the proposed agenda. The library board of trustees reserves the right to take items out of order, to combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and to remove items from the agenda at any time. All items designated for possible actions shall include discussion by the board of trustees, and they may take action to approve, modify, deny, take no action, or continue the item.
We approve the agenda as presented.
I second it.
Bonnie, who did?
I did.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Moving on to agenda item number three for possible corrective action. Discussion on approval of the minutes from the June 1st, 2020 regular meeting and the August 25th, 2020 regular meeting.
Bonnie Rogers, I move approval of the June... Let me get it here. Of the June 1st, 2020 regular meeting and of the August 25th, 2020 regular meeting.
Jill Harper, I second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the June 1st, 2020 meeting and the August 25th, 2020 meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries, and the minutes are approved from both previous meetings. Moving on to agenda item number four for possible corrective action. Discussion and review of the budget performance report summary and gift fund summary. Amy?
Good morning. This is Amy Dodson for the record. The budget report for ending July 31st, I will address that first. As you can see from the summary on the first page, we've not used much of our budget yet in this fiscal year, which is also true for August. Right now, we're only at about 4% on services and supplies. Most of our purchases have been related to COVID-19 and the closure and reopening of libraries. At the end of this financial report, there is a list of all the COVID-related purchases that we've made. There's really nothing that stands out on the budget report for July for that reason, but I'm happy to answer any questions about that report.
Okay, and also I'll note that the gift fund has not been used yet this year, and to my knowledge, they have not moved the gift fund balance from the previous fiscal year to this fiscal year. That generally does take a while, so this is nothing alarming. It's standard procedure, really, but within a couple of months, we should see that balance carry forward. But we have not used the gift fund, so it's really kind of moot at this point. And then, moving on to the August financial report, ending August 31st. That is, as I said, is very similar to July. Most of our purchases are related to COVID, although we have begun to purchase books again, which we've discussed at a previous meeting. Our services and supplies are only at about 8% right now, and again, on this budget report, there's no outstanding or unusual purchases, but I'm happy to answer any questions about what we've done so far.
Amy, what was the gift fund carryover, do you think?
Oh, gosh. I'm not sure. I'm pretty sure it's over $50,000, but I can't recall right at this minute.
Okay.
But I can double-check and let you know.
Do you know when it nor...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
When it normally carries over, what month that usually occurs?
Usually between October and December. If it's not done by December, then I follow up on it and make sure that it's going to be done. Any other questions about that? Okay, and then at the end of the financial reports, as I said, there's a list of our purchases related to COVID-19, our reopening and closure and sanitation and so on. These purchases are reimbursable with the CARES Act funding that the county received, so we will be reimbursed for these costs at a later date. I have no idea when that will be. Sometimes these things will last over the course of a couple of fiscal years. This is a very special circumstance, of course, because this country has not been through something like this, so it's hard to say when we will get reimbursed, but all of these purchases are allowable under the CARES Act and will be reimbursed at some point. Any questions about that? Okay, that's the end of the financial report then.
Okay, then we'll move on to agenda item number five for possible corrective action. Discussion on revising the format, contents, and delivery of board meeting materials, including but not limited to changing the delivery of packets to the board from electronic mail and U.S. mail to strictly electronic mail, resulting in a savings on postage and supply costs.
This agenda item is really a question for the board as to whether you would like to receive packets in paper format or electronic or both. At the moment, the board is receiving electronic packets by email and paper packets by U.S. mail. If you'd like to continue that process, that's fine, but this was an agenda item that I put on the agenda to ask if you would like to switch to electronic only, simply for the purpose of saving supplies and postage, but it's entirely up to you.
Bonnie Rogers, again, I very much prefer that we keep what we're doing now, both electronically and mail.
I agree. Jill Harper?
This is Mark Jensen. I'd like to move that we continue with the current procedure for delivering trustee meeting material.
Jill Harper, I second. Okay, go ahead. Jill Harper, I second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to keep the delivery of the board packets in the same format right now through U.S. mail and electronic mail. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Moving on to agenda item number six for possible corrective action. Discussion on scheduling a December 2020 meeting of the library board of trustees. And I asked for this item to be put on the agenda because I believe we need to have some more meetings to work on the long-range plan and to catch up on some of the things that we've missed, and I thought December 15th would be a good meeting date before the holidays.
Bonnie Rogers, again, I agree with Kate. I think we do have some major items we need to get to this year, if possible, and so I would like to see us schedule a meeting. December 15th is fine with me.
And that is a Tuesday. I presume it would be at 10:00 a.m. at other meetings.
Any other discussion on a meeting in December?
Okay, I move that we have a meeting on December 15th at 10:00 a.m.
Jill Harper, I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to hold a meeting December 15th at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Moving on to agenda item number seven for possible corrective action. Discussion on revisions and/or introductions of policies and procedures.
I believe this item was on the agenda at the request of Kate, and it was related to one of the goals on my previous performance evaluation. My intention was to work on policies and procedures throughout 2020, but that was before the pandemic, and so none of the policies have been revised this calendar year. We have changed a lot of procedures, obviously, related to COVID, but policies have not changed, and that's simply because we haven't had the time. However, I would be happy to revise any policies or write new policies that the board would request.
And I believe... Go ahead.
Go ahead, Kate.
I was just going to say if we could bring back any items that we feel that need to be updated or revised to the October meeting, and if Amy could bring us any that she sees, then we could discuss it at that meeting and make those revisions.
Bonnie Rogers, again, I think this is one of those other important things that we haven't had on the agenda, and we have asked Amy to do that over the year, and I understand with all the craziness this year, it wasn't possible, but I think we need to either the board look through the handbook and Amy and recommend policies that need to be reviewed and revised if necessary. I don't know that we can do it in October because some of those take more discussion than one meeting, and so I just say that we have it, and we bring as many as we can to the October meeting, and we work on what we can at that.
This is Amy again. I would propose that we discuss this in October, and the board can give me feedback on which policies to work on, and I can make suggestions, and then I can bring the first round of revisions to the November meeting and then possibly work on them again in December, December meeting, or January, and that would accomplish at least some of the revisions within the next few months. Just a suggestion.
That sounds like a good idea to me, Amy. This is Jill Harper.
Okay, so then we'll bring them back to our October meeting. Any of the trustees have a policy that they'd like to see updated, and Amy will bring us any suggestions she has, and we'll discuss it at the October meeting.
Bonnie Rogers, again, I had a request from a community member if the library had a mission statement. So I went through the handbook, and the only place I could find a mission statement was under the collection development policy, and I think maybe that's something we need to also put on for... In this policy review thing, if we want to develop a mission statement.
Okay, we can include that in the October agenda too with this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, then we'll move on to agenda item number eight for possible corrective action. Discussion of the library's long-range plan and planning for 2021.
I've included in your packet three, excuse me, four documents related to the long-range plan. The first one is the long-range plan overview. This is from the original long-range plan that was written in 2010 and 2011 and went into effect in 2011. It's simply a summary of what the public library is committed to, what our services are, and what the overall goals are, and then it also lists some suggestions or goals for improvement in the future, such as changes to the building and increased capacity and things like that. And that was just to kind of get the conversation going about the long-range plan. The second document is a list of most recent goals and objectives that the board worked on last year, and then I've also included notes about which ones are complete, which ones are not yet complete, and that is for both goal one and goal two. There's also a summary of the long-range plan that simply lists the goals and how they came to those goals. Last but not least, I also included a document that is called possible goals that we could consider in the future, and these were just suggestions from me. We've talked a lot about the long-range plan and what we want to do, what our options are. As far as the state library is concerned, the state librarian addressed this a little bit at the August 25th meeting, and she recommends five-year long-range plans. Currently, our long-range plan is for 10 years, and I believe previous plans were also for 10 years. She recommended five years, although it is up to us as to what we want to do about that. We could do two years, we could do 10 years. Excuse me, we could also, to give ourselves ample time, we could extend the current plan for a determined amount of time until we can write a new one, and that could be a year, that could be three years, it could be whatever the board decides. We can also continue to discuss this at future meetings, as long as we make a decision before December 31st.
And the plans from the Nevada State Library, the Carson City Library, and the Elko Library were included with the packet because Tammy Westergaard sent those, saying that we're close in size and demographics to those libraries, so we could use those as comparison. So that's why I wanted them to get to the board, so that possibly they could have time to look them over, and at our October meeting, we can discuss if we want to include any of theirs.
I didn't get the Carson City ones.
It's actually the Nevada Library Co-op.
Okay.
It's not Carson City.
I got that, okay.
Well, there was a link in the email that went to the Carson City Library one from Tam. Yeah, because that was like... Yeah, because that was like, it's a 48-page plan.
Oh, my heavens. Sorry, we just printed the attachments, I apologize.
No, that's fine, and there's is, I had sent it to the trustees, so they have it in that email. But it's from 2019 to 2024, so we can look through that one, too.
Okay.
So if everybody wants to do that, and then at the October meeting, we can go over what we want to change or include and how we want to proceed with it, whether we just want to extend what we have, or if we want to actually work on the five-year plan.
That sounds good to me because it's going to take some time to look through these. I think our current long-range plan really facilitated the library being able to do everything in the last six months with the technology and that. So I think it's still relevant, and we need to consider that. I liked the goals that Amy had put in for '21 to '26, not the goals, the objectives, because the goals are the same, but the objectives are, they are, you can measure them, they're measurable, and they're relevant. So I like that, but I also like the ones from Elko that we might take some of those and look at inserting to have for goals.
This is Mark Jensen. I agree, it seems with Bonnie on this, that the 10-year plan, even if it just turns out to be an internal document, I think it's a good idea so that those long-range goals, objectives can be kept in mind, expansion projects, for instance. But that a five-year plan with, that gets down to the nitty-gritty, the specifics, is more useful for the library in, since everything changes so fast these days.
Okay, is there any more discussion on that?
I would just.
Go ahead.
Sorry. This is Amy again. I would just like to reiterate what Bonnie said. I agree with her that the goals are very good and very relevant, and there's a lot that we could do with them. So there is some merit to the idea of keeping them and just developing new objectives and extending the goals for, you know, another year, two, or three, because I think they are really good. And when this plan was written, it was really excellent. So it's a really good foundation to start from. That's all.
Okay, then we'll include that on the October meeting to review those other plans, to review the objectives that Amy suggested, and go from there. Okay, then we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Nine for Discussion Only: Update on the Appointment of a New Trustee to the Library Board.
Okay. The new, pardon me, the new trustee will be appointed tomorrow at the Board of Commissioners Meeting at 1:00. It's one of the first items on the administrative of the agenda, right after consent. The packet for the board meeting is available online, and you can see the applications of the people who have applied by going to the county website under Agendas and Minutes. There have been seven applications from around the community. We had two applications from the Lake area, one from Zephroco, one from State Line, and then the applications from down in the valley were from all over, which is great. We had one from North County, one from Danoa, a couple from Minden, a couple from Gardinerville, which is great. I think it's really exciting that they're geographically diverse. I don't personally know any of them. I do recognize some of the names as our regular patrons. So they will be appointed tomorrow, as I said, and once that person is appointed, I will reach out to them and give them the schedule of our meetings and set up a time to get them a binder and give them a little orientation.
Amy, this is Bonnie again. I went to the county website, and I tried to find the applications. So I went through 300 and some pages of the agenda and supplemental material out of 700 and some, and I finally quit. But where could I find them really easy?
Well, that's the only way I know to find them, but I will go find them again and tell you the page numbers because I had to do the same thing. Or I can scan them and email them to you. If you prefer.
Would you do that?
Yeah.
I'd like that, too.
Oh, sure, absolutely. I'll do that today.
Thank you.
This is Mark Jensen. Mark Jensen, for the record. Amy, and I'm guessing as part of your discussion with this new trustee, you'll get them going on the State Library's online training program?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that reminder, I will.
Okay, if there's no further discussion on that, we'll move on. Agenda Item Number Ten for Discussion Only: Update on the Vacant Positions and Recruitment of Library Staff.
Thank you. This is Amy again, for the record. We have four vacant positions at the moment. Three of them are the frozen positions from earlier this year, and they remain frozen. I'm not sure how long that will last. We have another additional vacancy that was created when Heather Frue resigned. That position is still open for a couple of more days. The application closes on October 2nd. Once we get those applications from HR, we'll begin interviews as soon as possible and hopefully get that person hired quickly because having four open positions is really, really difficult. We're stretched as as we can be, so we're very eager to get someone hired.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, then we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Eleven for Discussion Only: The Library Director's Monthly Report on Library Operations and Statistical Reports from Staff.
Thank you. This is Amy again. The monthly report is attached. I used a slightly different format this time, and you can tell me if you like it better or worse or the same as the previous format. I've divided it into sections of operations, staff, projects, and law library. Under operations, as you know from previous meetings, we're still under our COVID operations, which means limited browsing hours and curbside service. Curbside service is every day, Monday through Saturday, at the Minden Library, and Tuesdays and Thursdays at Lake Tahoe. Browsing hours are three days a week, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday at Minden, and Tuesday and Thursday at Lake. The public is really happy about the browsing hours. They were really happy to have the library open again. Our circulation has been really, really good, especially considering we were closed for a while, and you'll see that when Julia presents the statistics. And then in my report, I talk a little bit about the quarantine procedures. Different studies have been done to reveal how long the coronavirus lives on various surfaces, including books and plastic and things like that. Well, since I wrote this report, which just means in the last few days, another study has come out to say that the virus is living longer on these surfaces, and I think some of that is due to the fact that the virus is mutating a little bit according to health experts. So it's living longer and longer on things like paper and plastic. So we will continue to adjust our quarantine procedures based on the best information that we have. It's not necessarily a bad thing, it just changes our procedures a little bit, but it does mean that the books will be back on the shelf a little bit more slowly than before. Hopefully, that will not cause too much of a problem. We've removed magazines from circulation at the moment because they have the highest levels of coronavirus on them, and they're incredibly difficult to sanitize, if not impossible. And we continue to get tons and tons of donations, way more than usual. We get several boxes a day, and that's a lot for us, and we've been taking them directly to thrift books in Reno since there's no book sale scheduled until the spring. Under the staff part of the report, everything's pretty self-explanatory. Luckily, Julia and Laura are going to be able to attend a virtual conference, even though we have no money this year for training. The State Library is paying for them to attend this conference. They have a scholarship program for training for library staff, and so I was really happy that we were able to take advantage of that. The telephone system is finished. We are going to be switching over any day now, meaning that we will turn off the old system and be completely dependent on the new system 100%. But until now, we've had both of them running at the same time just to make sure. One day this week, they'll be turning off the old system, and we will be 100% on the new system. And it's a really great, cool system. We're really excited about it. And as far as I know, everything's been running really, really well with that installation. Last but not least, the Law Library Board met on September 16th. We, well, the Law Library Board discussed the possibility of buying a new computer. We do need to have a computer in the Law Library so that the public can access legal databases such as Westlaw. However, since the public doesn't have access to computers at all at the library right now, we've put off that decision until it's necessary. Right now, Westlaw is available remotely from home through our website, thanks to the generosity of the distributor, which is Thomson Reuters. They've given us a free home access for our patrons until the library reopens, which is really nice, saves us some money. Otherwise, the Law Library is running really well. We have a couple of staff that have been working on it. Excuse me, the collection has been there since we closed in March, but staff have been working on it to clean it up, make it a little more organized, and put in all the updates that have come in since we closed, and it's going really, really well. And I'm really happy to have the Law Library at our library. I think that's everything. Any questions?
I had one question, Amy, on the quarantine of the books and stuff. How do you sanitize them or whatever, where they go back out on the shelves?
That's a great question. Most of the books have either a plastic jacket cover or paperbacks have that coated paper for a cover. We have to sanitize using alcohol that's at least 60%. And so it's sort of like hand sanitizer that you have to use for yourself, and it has to be at least 60% alcohol. And so we use either alcohol wipes or just straight rubbing alcohol on all of the surfaces. That's why it's almost impossible to do a magazine, they're just not strong enough to withstand that. Most of, most or all of the virus is supposed to disappear simply by quarantining, but we sanitize them as an extra step of precaution. So it's alcohol, we have to use alcohol, nothing else will kill it that you can use on paper and plastic. Bleach is too strong, yeah.
Amy, with Governor Cicilline's new statement that there could be 250 people in the meeting inside, what's our chances of opening the library more and also having in-person meetings?
Okay, I'll address those separately. The governor's order yesterday, which starts tomorrow, says that we can have 250 or half of our capacity, whichever is less. And so I'm confirming our capacity, our building capacities, to make sure, but I'll have that all written today, and I'll send you a copy of it this afternoon because I'm not 100% sure of our building capacities. I know that sounds terrible, but we've had a really hard time finding reliable information on that. I know what our meeting room capacities are, but not the entire building, and it doesn't include staff. So for instance, if our capacity is 100, we can let in 50 people at a time. That will make our jobs a little bit easier, so we will be doing that. As for opening up all the way, we can't change the access to the computers just because of the sanitizing factor. The governor did say that all of the other guidelines and mandates are still in place, so masks, sanitizing, hand sanitizing, and hand washing, and so on. Those are all still in place, so we're going to leave the computers closed off for now because we just don't have to sanitize that often, and they're difficult to sanitize. And then, of course, we still have to quarantine all of the materials, but we will be able to let more people in the building. While we're so shorthanded, I don't know if we can extend our hours at this point. We're going to have to give it further study. As for in-person meetings, I think that we could have in-person meetings if I can find the right venue, and so I'm going to start researching that now before our October meeting and see if we can hold it somewhere like the Community Center or somewhere besides the library because we just don't have the space at the library. We still have to space everyone apart and things like that.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, you're welcome.
And the restrictions on the bookmobile are still in place?
Yes.
And there's no timeframe on when that might be different?
Not that I know of, but I will look into it. I'll see if anybody knows anything.
That comes from OSHA?
Yes.
Okay.
Pardon me. Any other questions about that? Okay, then I'll hand it over to Julia to share statistics with us.
This is Julia Brown, for the record. Included in your packet is the statistical report for the current fiscal year, as well as the comparative numbers from July and August of 2019. The items checked out is, actually, considering our limited hours, we're really happy with the number of items that have been checked out, as well as the library visits. You'll see that in August, the library visits did go up substantially. That number is a little skewed due to curbside currently. Every time a staff member goes in and out of the doors, they are counted in the door counter, so that number is a little skewed, but it's pretty accurate for the number of visitors that we've had in the library. Another, the e-checkouts, if you notice, compared to last year, it's almost doubled. That is across all of our ebook platforms. We have seen an increase in checkouts on all of those, but our largest one is Hoopla. Right now, in 2019, we had an average of 250 patrons per month checking out items, and so far in 2020, we've had about 330 each month checking out items for an average of about four items per month checked out. And so that's a huge increase, and we're really excited about that, the Hoopla. Our curbside statistics have been pretty consistent over July and August. We had 972 curbside pickups in July and 955 in August in Minden, and up at the lake, we had 15 in July and 15 in August. Even though we're open for browsing, curbside is still very popular. We're doing about 35 to 40 pickups a day in Minden, and then up at the lake, it's about three to four per week. Some other special statistics I'll go over is our summer reading statistics. We had our second year using the Beanstack online tracking system for patrons. We had a little bit harder time getting the information out to people since the majority of signups last year were done at our in-person events, as well as when people came into the library. And since we're limited to that this year, we're really happy with our numbers. While we had about half the number of people participating in summer reading, the minutes read was actually doubled. Last year, we had 123,000 minutes read, and this year, the kids read over 200,000 minutes. So we're pretty excited about that. That's all I have unless anybody has questions.
What about the adult readers, the summer program?
The adults was similar. We had about half the number of participants as last year, but the same as with the kids, they doubled what they had done last year, just about. Adults was the number of books read versus minutes read, what we tracked, and there were about 350 last year, books read, and this year, they read over 500.
This is Mark Jensen. Amy, I assume there's an expense for Hoopla, and I was wondering what that is. And also, either of you, is there, with Hoopla, do you have information on whether the programming is mostly youth-oriented that's requested for adults? Do you have that kind of?
I don't have the cost for Hoopla right in front of me, but I can send you that. Hoopla is used a lot for streaming television shows, actually. It's also used for music and audiobooks and so on, but I know the television shows are very popular because you can watch whole seasons of things. Julia can probably answer that better than I can.
I can, yes. Right now, in I, I can, yes. Right now, in, in Hoopla, we pay per checkout. So for each item that is checked out, we, we pay that, that way. They're about a dollar to two dollars a piece, depending on the item that is checked out. Are the two largest collections that are checked out is the TV shows, as well as adult audiobooks, adult fiction audiobooks. Kids is the next after that, the, the juvenile audiobooks. Audiobooks is the largest, but TV shows is right after that.
And I'll just throw in a quick announcement. If, if you haven't heard already, that Overdrive, which is an ebook provider, has acquired RB Digital, which is our current ebook provider, which means our library is switching to Overdrive in the next few days. I just approved it today. They do charge a, a platform fee or a hosting fee. They all call it something different. But basically, it's like our base fee, and then we pay for whatever items that we order. But they provide ebooks and e-audiobooks. We'll still have Hoopla, but we won't have RB Digital anymore. It's also called One Click. It's a product from Recorded Books. And so Overdrive bought them out. Overdrive has an app called Libby that you may have heard of. Other libraries in the area have Overdrive as well, and we get a lot of requests for it. So even though it was kind of out of our control, I think our patrons will be really happy about the switch. And Laura has been in charge of that project, and I'll just say she's done a really excellent job. The, the, the switchover is a lot more complicated than you might think, and so she's, she's handled some complexities really, really well, so.
And so whoever had an RB Digital sign-in, they'll have to create a new one for the Overdrive app?
That's correct. The items that you have checked out now will carry over, but your holds will not. So if you have anything on hold, you might want to make note of that. There'll be an announcement on our webpage, and you should also get an email, and it'll show up on Facebook. This will all happen in the next five to seven days.
We need to get an app for Overdrive.
Yes, that's correct. And we're happy to help you set that up.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Julia and Laura can both help you with that anytime. That's it for the monthly report.
Okay. Thank you, and we'll move on to agenda item number twelve, closing public comments. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Library Board of Trustees. Any written public comment received after four PM the day before the Library Board meeting will be compiled and added as supplemental materials to the county's website and distributed to the Library Board of Trustees within twenty-four hours after the meeting. To make public comment during the meeting, the public must call seven seven five, seven eight three, six oh two four, and leave a voice message, which will be played for the Library Board of Trustees and the public. Public comment is open at ten forty-nine.
This is Veronica Hallam, for the record. We have not received any public comment voicemail at this time.
Then we'll just wait it out until ten fifty-five.
This is Amy Poole, for the record. Just real quick, Bonnie, I was able to pull up the agenda for the BOCC meeting tomorrow, and the applications start on page four hundred and three and go to page four hundred and twenty-eight. Just so.
Okay.
The public is aware of what pages, as well as the board members.
Well, I, I didn't get to four oh three, so.
Okay, well, that's where they start.
Okay.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, Amy, Amy Poole, Amy, do you think how long will it be before they get to the administrative side tomorrow? Does that take a long?
That's always a tricky question. As the, as you know, the Board of Commissioners are able to pull items from consent that they could discuss prior to agenda item number one, which is the Library Board appointment. And there are two liquor board items. Best guesstimate, and like I said, guesstimate, we never know, would be maybe one thirty. It'll be, it'll be pretty, pretty quick into the meeting, I, I would assume. But like I said, it's just a best guess. We really don't know what the board members will end up doing.
Okay, good, thank you.
And I have a question for Amy. In the past, when they make these appointments, they've always been in-person meetings, and they ask questions of the applicants who are there. Since this is a virtual meeting, is there any way for them to do that?
Yes, I have invited, or we, the County Manager's Office has, have invited all seven of the applicants to the Board of County Commissioners meeting via Zoom. They will, ending via Zoom, they will have the opportunity to answer any questions that the county commissioners choose to ask them, just like they have in the past. I, I, I don't know if they will have questions. It's up to the commissioners. However, they will have the option to to participate and to answer questions, just like they have in the past, just via Zoom, like we are doing right now.
Great.
As to why? Go to YouTube?
Correct. It will be live-streamed via YouTube, which is on the agenda packet. It's on the front page at the top, under the location. And so if you want to watch it, that is the way to do it. Also, just like past practice, will be recorded. The YouTube will be recorded, and typically, within twenty-four to forty-eight hours, we have that posted on our website if you are not available during the meeting.
Thanks.
Yes.
Hi. Have any messages come in?
No messages come in. I just checked. No.
Thank you.
And again, I apologize. Something is the, the voicemail message are not coming through on email, so I do have to check the phone.
That's fine. I think it's ten fifty-five.
Yes, my clock just changed.
Yeah.
So public comment will be closed. And then a meeting adjournment is the only other thing.
I move that we adjourn.
Jill Harper, I second it.
Okay, then we'll adjourn this meeting of the Library Board of Trustees at ten fifty-five AM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Amy.